Six, two thousand and eighteen, Board of Selectmen meeting to order, seven P. M. And make everyone aware at this point that we are being recorded. It's going to be on YouTube, on the town, from the town website, on Town YouTube channel, whatever that is. And, plaid allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, okay. I want to make a motion to approve the agenda as written with the Selectmen's report adding a discussion of building department fees. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have minutes from May sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as written. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
One minor correction, under four correspondence, item C, third sentence, Mr. Dill forwarded photos of tree stumps that an individual had dumped. It was on town property but adjacent to his property.
And where was that again?
First page.
Mm-hmm.
Four, C.
Four, C.
Third sentence.
Okay, so it's adjacent to his property rather than not.
But it was on town property.
Okay.
That's all I saw.
Okay, with that correction as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondence. Out of order here somehow. Yeah, give that to me, thank you. I have correspondence from Ronald Turner, and it's addressed to Mr. Christopher Sennick, custodial staff, municipal office building. Please let this letter serve as a formal thank you for all your recent efforts at the new municipal office complex. I continue to hear positive comments from the staff and visitors, not only regarding the cleanliness of the facility, but also your great attitude. Today I received a letter from the East Haddam resident trooper that I would like to share with you. Trooper Ian Haas stated, you know, shared that. On behalf of the East Haddam police, I just wanted to express our sincere appreciation for the custodial staff's outstanding work. As you know with the work we do, we can turn our office into a mess quite quickly, yet every day it ends up spotless. The effort does not go unnoticed and is greatly appreciated. Not only do they do a fantastic job, but they do it with a smile. Please let them know that we appreciate it. Your ability, attitude, and skill sets make me grateful that you're part of East Haddam team. Please let this letter help to recognize one example of your hard work. Sincerely, Ron Turner, Director of Operations. And we have a second letter, addressed to Mr. Sean Shea, custodial staff, municipal office building. Dear Sean, please let this letter serve as a formal thank you for all your recent efforts at the new municipal office complex. I continue to hear positive comments from staff and visitors, not only regarding the cleanliness of the facility, but also your great attitude. Today I received a letter from East Haddam resident trooper that I would like to share with you. Trooper Ian Haas shared that. On behalf of the East Haddam police, I want to express our sincere appreciation for the custodial staff's outstanding work. As you know with the work that we do, we can turn our office into a mess quite quickly, yet every day it ends up spotless. The effort does not go unnoticed and is greatly appreciated. Not only do they do a fantastic job, but they do it with a smile. Please let them know that we appreciate it. Your ability, attitude, and skill set make me grateful that you're part of East Haddam team. Please let this letter help to recognize one example of your hard work. Sincerely, Ron Turner, Director of Operations. And this is C. C. to the East Haddam Board of Selectmen, in both cases, and to their personal files. Our custodians are doing an outstanding job, and it's much appreciated, and I see that every day. And their attitude is just absolutely remarkable. We have a second correspondence. It's, dear Emmett, thank you and the town employees for your help in keeping the Gellston Triangle beautiful. It is our first impression of the town as people cross the bridge. The removal of the hemlocks, replanting of trees, and mulching is greatly appreciated. Sincerely, the East Haddam Garden Club. And our town crew went to work down there, removed some trees that had to be, and replanted, and made it look pretty darn good. There we go.
Can I take that back?
You want that back?
Thanks.
But I am still out of order here, and I'm not sure why. Seven. I think I lost track of the pile of stuff. Well, in any case, we're going to go into the Selectmen's report at this point, and number of things that I wanted to comment on. The T. A. R., TAR, Town Aid for Roads Fund, was restored by our legislature. That amounts to $161,000 that we were not going to receive. We ordinarily get it in two phases, one in the fall, one in the spring, and there's been some question about the second half, which is controlled by the governor, whether or not it would happen, and it did. We have hired J. D. Sarnik as our full-time fire department, paid staff, and so now we're back up to a full staff there, and that seems to be working very well. The Bone Mill Bridge, over the Hungerford Brook on Bone Mill Road, was in a state of hold by the state, as were so many other bridges. They finally loosened that up, and it's all back on track again. We released the order to fabricate, and hopefully sometime this summer, we're going to actually get that bridge finally back in place again. As I said before, Vinny, I was going to ask you to comment on your fees, and could you do that for us?
Sure. Building the park has been, over the last couple of months, been looking at what the fee, posted fee rate is now versus what the market is actually bringing. We're a tad behind you. I believe it was July first, two years ago, that the fees did go up slightly, but the, say, per square foot, per home, construction cost is not even in line with what it costs to actually build a home. So bringing those square foot items up, so 2018 RS Means book is where our perspective is heading with decimal, primary numbers. I've given to the finance office to take a look at, just to make sure we're not way out of whack, but, you know, I look at it more sufficiently, just that I feel that we're going to bring us right into where other surrounding towns are and not be, you know, trying to gouge anybody for that. So I hope you'll be able to bring something forward to the July meeting, I would imagine, for your proposal for it.
Okay, thank you. Wanted to comment on the East Haddam Revitalization Committee. They did not meet this past month, so we really didn't have a report from them. We will have a little later in the new business, the RFP Award, for the environmental side of the village property.
So can we move that, though, to unfinished business, just because that's going to be ongoing? I think we should have an update. I mean, granted, you can, we can just say there was no meeting and there's no update.
Okay, well, it's a matter of location, if you're down there.
Right, I just want to make sure it's never, like, right now it's under First Selectmen's report.
Mm-hmm.
I just think it won't fall off the radar if we put it under unfinished business.
Okay. There we go. And we've got a correspondence here, something that Rob, you sent to Commissioner Reddick. We've included, and I'm a little puzzled by that and trying to understand just what's going on there, so could you?
I was asked to contact someone in DOT by the Village Revitalization Group to find out what the status of the bridge was, if there was any plans outside of the repairs that are proposed or in the works now, and to have someone come and talk to the group.
Okay.
So.
Looks as if they're going to have someone down. Now, that's going to be for the revitalization group?
Yes, yes.
So at the next meeting, hopefully, there'll be someone there?
Yep.
Okay. A little confusing there for me. And I want to respond to previous meetings' questions, and there were quite a number of them that I felt the need to come back with some information on. Randy, I think I made it, or told you that we were able to identify who was responsible for those stumps being there. We turned it over to the police. They felt because of the uncertainty of material, it had all been cleared up, there was nothing for them really tangible to deal with. They went down and they dealt with the guy with a warning, made him aware of the fact that he was identified, and that that was not to happen again. B. B. Road.
Did he admit to doing it, or did he?
I.
So they identified him, they went and warned him, did they ask him to?
Made it clear that they knew what he had done, and that, and Ian talked to me about it. He said, really, the stumps have all been cleaned up, there's nothing that we can do at this point.
Oh.
In terms of arrest or?
Clean the stumps up. Who cleaned them up?
I think the public works went down and cleaned them up. And I'm not sure, Randy, that was on town property or town easement of some sort?
Yeah, my letter, I thought I made that clear, perhaps they didn't, but it was in the town right of the way, another few feet away, on the private.
Do you mean the, right of the way, adjacent to the road, or was it?
On the travel portion of the road.
Okay, so the.
On the town side of the stone.
Okay.
And I actually, I'm surprised that it was only a warning, because I spoke with the resident trooper getting details, and Ian told me that infraction is an issue, so I'm surprised.
I, in the end, that's what he came back and said he wanted to do, and so I said, okay, it's up to him to handle it.
So they were issued a verbal warning?
Yeah, verbal warning, confronted them in person, and made it very clear that it was not to happen again.
So do we not have the ability to issue a written warning?
I.
Probably not on anything like that.
I don't know.
Something like that.
I mean, there was enough evidence, I think, they could have at least issued an infraction for that, because there was photographs of the, of the material, but.
Yeah. That was his call at that point.
Yeah.
We had a discussion this last time about playing fields, that there'd been, you know, Jimmy going out and talking about them and whatnot. As it turned out, the only thing that's been discussed at all in terms of playing fields are the property right behind us here, and that property has been under discussion for years. There's, I think, $150,000 a year going out into the future for the next five or six years in terms of development in the capital side of our budget, and we keep pushing it off and pushing it off. What they're looking for, as I understand it right now, is simply to get ready for some sort of a grant. They're not actually looking to move forward with it. All they're interested in is being positioned so that if some sort of a grant developed, they could do it. And I went down and talked to Lisa about it, and I said, do we really need any more fields? You know, we've got a declining population of kids, and it seems like we've got a lot of fields already, and do we need to spend that money there? And she's of the opinion that the park and rec is growing year by year, the demand is greater, and that, yes, they could use more fields, in part because the ones they're using are getting pretty badly beaten up during the course of summer, and they need a rest or break from time to time. And given the increasing population that's using them, and the fact that the fields are somewhat overused at this point.
Well, so I don't understand this, I don't understand that, since we are leasing them out or whatever, letting Colchester use them for a price, I mean, then we shouldn't be letting them do that if we're overusing our fields.
Yeah, I, same question that I have on that. Now, if we're going to turn it over, I know that there is some sort of a.
Well, currently, there's nothing in the budget for it, correct?
No, it's not being done this year. So this is a matter for discussion in the future. Do we need them? Is it worth the investment? How are we going to use the property? And there was no way to do anything up until now with the uncertainty of just how this building was going to impact those fields. So they, it was just held off and held off. But that's coming to the future, but that's the only fields that are under any kind of consideration at all, and those have been in front of planning and zoning a number of times and been discussed. So it's, it's not anything new, it's appeared out of, out of the blue.
Emmett, before you go on, just quick aside, I wasn't aware, Colchester is using the fields, what are they using them for?
Nichols.
Yeah, remember last, I think this was discussed at our last meeting?
Yeah.
They are renting out the fields for their, one of their softball fields or something.
Yeah.
Nichols Field.
They had a shortage, and they were.
I don't know, I remember talking about it, it must have been here.
Yeah, much earlier this year, it came up as an issue, and they are paying in some fashion for the use of it, so it's, it's working.
I think they're doing some improvements to the field, too, or something.
Horizontal curve, thus far, we've heard nothing back from the state. We've made adjustments, been no issue with it. I talked to O. Lime, Killingworth, Durham, and discussed the possibility of getting together and really confronting the state on it. Not a whole lot of interest in doing that at this point. Not happy with them. Different ones take different approaches. So Durham, she pretty much says, look, it's for safety, eat it. That's the way it is. We're not going to change it. It's making the roads safer. You go down and talk to Bonnie or Kathy, Bonnie from O. Lime or Kathy from Killingworth, they hate them as much as we do.
Are we on, are you on unfinished business, or are we still on First Selectmen's report?
This is for, this is answering questions from last time.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm confused.
And just, just that we have looked into it, I was asked to do that, and I'm responding that I did.
Okay.
And at this juncture, as I say, we've made adjustments, we've not had any feedback or any pushback on it, so I guess for the moment, we're going to wait and see what happens. One thing was asked was about speed signs being, you know, installed as well down on B. B. Road by you.
At our meeting? No, last time we talked about speed bumps on someone else's road.
Somebody else mentioned it, I wasn't, so I don't remember who it was.
I think, Randy, did you mention that, that somebody was putting up speed limit signs?
Yeah, I just mentioned it, because you said they were all done with the signs, and they happened to send the truck out with the crew, and they were putting speed limit signs on them.
They're all done with the yellow signs. If there's speed signs involved, it's nothing to do with that program, it's something else entirely.
But B. B. Road is a, B. B. Road is a town road, right?
And I.
So we put those signs up?
I would think that we'd put up speed signs rather than the state.
No, this was, this was a contractor, this was not the town.
Yeah.
So you'll check on that again?
I'll ask Beth about it.
Because it's a, it's a, it's a town road, not a state road, so I guess that would be the question.
I'm well aware that it's a town road.
Yeah, well, so that's a question.
That's ugly, you mean, that they would be on, but these yellow signs went up on town roads all over.
I understand, yeah, but.
So it's.
If it's not under that, then who's putting up speed signs on our street?
I might want to point out at this point that someone modified the curve, the sign on the curve on Boardman, because apparently, maybe he thought it was too bright, so he hit it head-on with the truck and cleaned them right out, so.
All of them?
The one at the apex of the corner, so.
Well, that's, I'm not going to miss that one.
Also, you know, someone went off also on Boardman on the straightaway and hit a pole, so we may want to consider turning some of the chevrons, so tells the road people that the road is straight there.
It's kind of crazy, isn't it? What else do we have here? There was a question on the financials for hauling our own waste at the transfer station. Beth was supposed to be here tonight, she has those numbers, I don't. The estimate that I've seen is $100,000 savings, but we're going to try to have her at the next meeting, and we'll see if we can get better numbers and how it was worked out, where it came from.
Maybe we can get them sent to us beforehand, just so we can take a look at them and then.
Yeah, see what we can get.
Maybe we don't have to waste your time coming here, but, I mean.
Yeah.
You have a chance to digest it if we're, so we can.
Yeah.
And, Rob, you had asked about tree removal last time, and I'll tell you, I've got a stack somewhere down here, an inch, three inches thick, of paper describing what's going on with the, just the ash trees, the white ash, lots of different information about it. One of the things they've said is leave them alone until they're actually dead, because there may be some that have survival built into them, and they certainly like to find those so they can propagate those and get those all over the state. So the advice that I've seen here says, when they die, take them out, but wait until they do die before you attack them. In terms of the oaks, they last a little longer, they're not quite the threat as quick. Our budget is about $25,000 every year right now, and we use all of that up every single year without any question. Sprague went in and did an assessment of all the ash trees they had, and came up with a figure of $312,000 to remove those trees. So we're looking at something pretty substantial. I think that what we need to do is perhaps go out with Beth, she's a tree warden, and try to get an assessment of just what we are looking at. And you had spoken, I think, of 200 oak trees.
So I did a survey in the last week or so, and just on 14 roads on the east end of town, or more, more or less on the east end of town, there's 293 trees on town roads there. I mean, there may be some that are, it's hard to tell where the boundaries are, obviously, but some very close to the edge of the road, and, or over top of the road, and, and actually very few ashes were here. These are almost all oaks, and a few maples, but, you know.
And that's basically.
Is that what you're saying, are dead?
Dead.
In harm's way to people, or?
Hanging over the road, at least part of them, all or part of them are hanging over the road, or in the towns right of way. So, I mean, that's, that's probably no more than 20 miles or 15 miles of our 120 miles of roads in town, so.
We've got a big problem coming, so.
And they're all town roads, not state roads?
These are all just town roads.
Now, I did approach Eversource about it.
Yeah.
Because.
Yeah, some of those will be, obviously will be Eversource issues, potentially.
One side of the road or the other belongs to them.
Right.
And I asked Pat about that when I met her, oh, a couple of weeks ago. She said they've already used up essentially all of their budget for tree trimming for this year, those nor'easters that came through and all the damage that they had, and she just kind of shook her head and said, didn't know how they were going to handle their side of it. This is going to be a very big deal for the state and for the town.
So, I mean, you know, I think we're looking at somewhere 100,000 to 200,000 at least this next fiscal year.
Over the next year or two, and oaks hold up a little bit longer, the ashes, you've got to take care of pretty fast when they're down.
Like I said, most of those, the ones I counted, were oaks, but, I mean, there was a few maples in there, and, you know, I'm looking at a dentry, and I noticed one next to it has a big hollow thing, you know, so I included things like that, but the, it's definitely going to be an issue, and.
It's just one that's going to get worse with time. We can get away with holding off a little bit initially, but that's not going to last.
So what are you requesting, that we put more into the budget for tree removal?
Well, I think it'd be wise.
Right, but we already have a.
Right now, with only 25,000, I'm, you know.
That's nothing.
My gut is that it's going to be 100,000 to 200,000, like I said, potentially next year, next fiscal year, and I'm not sure where, what some of the, quite honestly, and I've, I was probably told and I've forgotten, what some of the costs are here, looking at the public works budgets, but.
Yeah, the figure that I get, talking to Beth, is $500 to $700 per tree to get it down. That's a lot of money. That's serious.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and, wow, we got a serious problem coming at us. And, you know, it isn't just us, it's, the entire state has this problem. Anyway, there it is, but we did look into that, and it's.
So, so what do we, what's our plan?
I don't think there's anything we do right now. We've got to talk to the tree warden, we've got to try to get a grip on just what it's going to cost, and that's a matter of going to the Board of Finance and saying, how do we do it?
So is this something that Rob can follow up with, with the tree warden, so, I mean, to?
So, Emmett, I mean.
I mean.
Are we?
It works for him.
I'd like to go out with you.
Oh, yeah.
The two of us, and go talk to her, sit down and.
Okay, that's fine.
Get a good grip on this.
Yeah, the problem is, is, right, so, I don't know, is that allowed? Because then, is it considered a meeting?
That's right, too, we require them.
That's why I'm saying.
Well, have a nice chat, and get back to us.
No, I mean.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
I mean, Emmett's got a lot on his plate, I just think that we can try to.
I'm willing to talk to her.
You have the knowledge, it sounds like, so, I mean, I mean, Emmett doesn't.
Go up there and see, see if we can get a plan. How do we do this? How much per year? What kind of a timeframe we've got on the oaks, and what timeframe we've got on the ash?
What's her background or training for this? Do you have any idea?
She's an engineer, but.
She's not an act.
Beyond that, I'm not sure.
Okay.
In terms of trees.
Yeah, so, yeah, Beth's going to come next meeting, so we can talk to her more about it.
And we can ask her more at that point. There you go. Anyway, that kind of wraps up what I've got. Yeah, that's all of it, and it's citizens' concerns at this point. Todd?
Todd Gellston, 50 Volvo Road. On the signs, the horizontal curves, this is a done deal now, the issue's over? My concern is, some towns, they can live with it, maybe those towns like Durham don't have the situation they have in this town. My concern, as I said all along, I've got real safety concern about those signs, which if there was something coming new to the town at night, that one guy really hit the sign itself, the tree itself, or off the pole.
No, he cleaned out both of them, they were two together there, they.
Need to see his vehicle.
Well, he flipped it over, too, so.
Oh, okay, but it sounds like if, if we're waiting for the state to do something, no offense to anybody, don't mean any offense, if the state hasn't done anything, and I extrapolate the curve, the line is flat, it's going to stay flat, the guy's going to do anything, it's up to us to do something about it. So before we leave this issue and close on it, I want to make it real clear, to be determined, that we do not have a safety issue, those signs as they're placed now. If we don't have a safety issue, they can stay there, I agree, but we do.
What, what kind of safety issue are you speaking?
Distraction to driving.
It's too brilliant and too bright.
Yes, we can complain about what they want, yes. It's confusing at best.
Were we going to have a traffic engineer, something come out, something? Was someone going to come out, but that costs money?
You get someone called a circuit rider, and you can petition for him, and he comes out, I think, out of Yukon, and.
Does it cost us money?
I've got to look into it and find out.
Not supposed to cause any.
Okay, so why can't we get this person to come out and assess the situation?
Well, that was one of the things we talked about early on, so.
Yeah.
Good idea.
And I think it's timely now.
Okay, so we'll follow up on that, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, good idea. Okay, the second point is tree cutting. Yes, it is expensive, but important trees get cut down in a timely manner, because somebody could get hurt. And we know somebody got killed, but, uh, a month ago, the tree fell out, and it's here in this state. So, uh, it's a real concern, and I have a suggestion how to make it. Tree cutters taking down trees, they're busy like crazy right now because of the wind damage, plus it's spring or summer. Their business is definitely dead and flat in the winter. And, and, 'cause I have some trees in my place to cut down, Ivan, that proposition was made to me. If I had a tree cut down now, it's X amount of dollars, if I wait till the winter, it's about half that. So, if we, we need to cut these trees down, I think we should negotiate a deal with, with the contractor. Do it in the winter, for a lot less cost than doing it now. If there's a tree that's really a danger, we should do it now, and I'm not saying that if the rest of the trees, they come down, they wait till the winter time. That's when we should do it. I'll give you a timeframe, between November and March.
This is why we have a tree warden, to try to assess where the danger lies, what has to be done, what doesn't have to be done right now. But that's, that's the role of the tree warden.
Okay, that's my suggestion.
And.
Thank you.
She's gonna become very aware of that.
One more thing, thank you for the microphones, now I can now hear, hear you clearly and all that you say, so before I close.
Were they never on before?
They're on, but only for this half of the thing.
Oh.
There's an adjustment that. Part of the learning curve.
Okay, uh, we've already talked about the horizontal.
Another?
I'm sorry, uh.
May I have a question?
Sure.
This is a, one of the pages from the final report that I moved to.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
As you're aware, uh, I chaired a committee for you, having to do with the tree transportation. I have two things I wanted to bring up, something happened today that I want to bring to your attention that I, I think we really do appreciate. Take some type of action, was that, I visited the transfer station today and, uh. Someone that was unhappy with the fact that we closed the back of the.
Hopper.
Was directed to me, uh, to go and answer why that happened, uh, by your format. I don't want anyone to have that happen to me, I'll be very happy to defend the action I had, but I have my, my due appreciation.
But you were up there and some of you.
I went there as a, as a citizen to get rid of my garbage. It wasn't exactly a pleasant conversation, I'm always respectful to everyone that I speak to. But when I heard the word that my report was fallacious, yeah, continued being so. But I certainly didn't wish.
Ooh, that was out of line.
It was one of the people that has already spoken to you directly on it. I asked him whether he's, that you took responsibility for enacting that, and I said, good, and he said that you did.
Uh, you know, and I've made it clear that it's my responsibility, and if there's any heat, I take it.
We discussed this, okay, in fact, I was on the opposite side, since this was a larger thing, I said, perhaps this shouldn't be enacted at this time, it should be done at later time. Having said that, when I wrote the report, I tried to, between the interim report and the final report. I tried to provide, and I, and the reason I wanted to come to this rather than just to you, was that. I went through the time and I, and I read the Connecticut municipal leaders' man. Okay, to understand where the responsibility, Rob, I met you at a local restaurant, you shared some things with me and so forth. And then I reviewed it again last week, and I realized that it's not Emmett's responsibility to go and. And, and, and make policy decisions. Policy decisions according to your man, that guides your rules, made by the Board of Select as a group. So I thought in that case, it was more appropriate for me to say what I want to say to you now. It's been a month past the, uh, the time that you've had your, uh, budget vote. And I, I don't know, other than closing the back of the dump, which apparently has aggravated a number of people, I don't know how much has happened. In the final report, I wrote this to be a roadmap for you, for you. On the document that I just gave you, it shows you exactly what the savings are for each of the actions. Now, while, while the report that we wrote did ask that you go and implement all these things as, as a, as a group. It was very clear that you said, we're not gonna do that, and I understand that. It was very clear that from the beginning, that, that the, that the committee had no power, in fact, it says that in the first paragraph. What we did was make some recommendations. But in your deliberations, what I would ask is that you simply take a look at, where do we save the money? Okay, there was discussions by this gentleman and his, and his lovely wife, I guess, okay? Saying that they didn't bite much, it only represented one percent of the total budget. I will say to you, it represented three percent of the town's budget, without reducing any services, which. To me was probably a pretty big deal. But if you decide to do this in a piecemeal way, or in fact, you decide that this is not a plan that you wish to endorse, but you wish to endorse something else. If you simply look at these things and you say, where do we save our money? The first one is tipping fee reduction from haulers, it's almost a hundred thousand dollars. Actually, something very interesting happened in this discussion that I had with this gentleman, where that was quite adversarial. When I said to him, I said, well, this is one of the things, I said, in one of the group, one of these companies, which is not, like, I'm not a local company. The only thing they do is to pick up commercial waste, and we subsidize their business. And even him said to me, why are we doing that? And I said, I have no idea. As, as I think I mentioned, is that, that after June thirtieth, we will now be the only town in all of Connecticut. That is allowing private haulers to bring their stuff there for free. There isn't anyone else. So I asked you to take a very careful look at that, and certainly, in a more immediate thing, you can say, why are we accepting? If I had a business and I knew that there was a, there was a transfer station that would allow me to, to reduce my costs by not paying any tipping fees. And it's not dealing with residential garbage. That should be able, you should be able to address that tonight. You may have some rules that govern this, whether it's new business or old business, but to me, that's ridiculous. The rest, recycling programs, this gentleman and his wife said, yeah, we should be coming up with some kind of. How do we do some, some outreach, how we can, how we, how we can increase our recycling and teach our people that. Doesn't cost any more time to go and put something in a separate bin, it really doesn't. And then the, the third thing is bulky waste. We call for an increase in the charge for bulky waste, but more importantly, has anything been done about. Ensuring that everyone that goes up and drops, drops off bulky waste, in the study that was conducted, okay? Asked the question, where did the numbers come from? Okay, the numbers came from Beth's numbers, I didn't pick up any numbers. I just took it off, she keeps very detailed numbers, she's a brilliant manager. So I just simply put them and showed them, showed them to you in a different way. Now, unfortunately, with regard to bulky waste, it shows that you're losing a fortune. Okay, and that can be addressed immediately, okay? I would suggest that you as a group decide that we're going to address it. And then Emmett, as, as the chief executive, should be given direction saying, we want it addressed by this time. And you put a timeframe on it and you get it done, okay? And there simply isn't any excuse for this, okay? I, I, the third thing is, when I go up, I've been doing a lot of gardening work recently, okay? I do, I choose to do it myself and I schlappen here, and how many more years I have of it, that, that I'm gonna be able to do that. I told my wife, I don't think it's gonna be a lot more, but, but in any case, I saw commercial haulers bringing in. That type of waste, garden waste. Now, we have the advantage that you're able to go and burn it, so it doesn't cost you anything. But that's something that you should examine, about whether you wanna accept commercially generated waste and being brought up there. I question you, uh, there was one company that I know that does business all throughout this, this area. Can we guarantee that all of the waste that they selected, that they bring there, only comes from the town of East Town? That's ridiculous, I didn't address that in this report. I never did, it was, it was an oversight on my end. So those are the things that I think you can address, and if there's controversy having to do with how bad the bad plan is because of this and that, okay? You can, we talked about that, there's other ways of addressing that. I, and, and the report, it even talks about a different plan, a hybrid plan, that they, that they use in, in essence. There's a punch card and a, or you pay a fee to get it. So that's all I have to say to you, okay? I believe that you can do it, I think that you as a group have to show some sense of urgency. And then you should vote on it, you should give it to the chief executive, give him a date that he has to have it done by, and then get it done. Thank you very much.
I think we discussed that last meeting.
I think we did, and you know what? If I devote one hundred percent of my time to it, I can do it. And, uh, there'll be a whole bunch of stuff for you guys to do that I can't do. We're gonna move as quick as we can.
Are we still in citizens' concerns?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely, that's where we are.
I wanna make sure, 'cause I got, you know, transfer stations coming up. My question last, uh, meeting was, um, in, in regards to the playing fields, was the authorization. Of why, um, staff was starting to do the paperwork, going to board meetings. Without the knowledge of Parks and Rec on, on their own, and.
Why who was going?
Why staff was doing this, and who authorized staff to, to start to do all this paperwork, for the fields in the back? And that was just my question.
Without authorization from Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec didn't know that they were going to the boards with the request to, um.
Yeah, I, I, and, and I didn't know Parks and Rec requests that.
They were doing it on their own.
Who, who was the employee?
Playing against any, playing its owning, we've discussed it over the years, but nothing official and Parks and Rec, nothing official has ever come out. We all know about Fields back there, I mean, I used to play back there when I was a kid, but. My, my question is, is why is, why is the urgency and why is money being spent on the budget for staffing expenses when no one's authorized it? I haven't, and I'm assuming you haven't either, because you obviously didn't know about it. So, why is time and energy being spent? When no one has authorized it, no one knows about it, that, that, I guess that's my question on it.
Okay, I can't answer that question.
Okay, I mean, I'm out here every day, so I can't keep an eye on my staff.
I do know that the agreement, the understanding, has been right along that once this building was set. And the drainage was then organized down below, we were gonna take a look at it and position ourselves, so that if an opportunity came, we'd be there.
Right, but there is, there is a need at this point.
And all my understanding, and talking to, uh, Lisa about it. Is that this is simply to position us so that should a grant become available, we might go for it. That's, and we're not looking to spend vast amounts of money on that. Figure I had was a matter of five or six thousand, perhaps seven thousand dollars tops, to position ourselves.
I, I'm just wondering why it's, why it's going on, and they're not, and Parks and Rec is representing themselves at these, at these meetings. When staff is representing staff, I mean, Parks and Rec and they can't.
I, I can't really answer that question for you.
'Cause they can't, they can't do that.
I, I can.
There's staff for the boards.
I can look into it and just ask about that.
Staff for what? What do they staff?
Well, staff can't, can't go and represent another commission or board in front of a commission like. My staff can't come in front and start playing and solving and representing Parks and Rec. I, then I have no staff to go ask questions about what's going on, because my staff is representing that board, so it puts a little bias on them. If you follow me. Staff is, staff is staff for the commissions, not for every.
Well, I, I just think, I guess I'm, I, I don't understand that.
I'm, I'm a little confused myself, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to look into just exactly what happened and what was said, and.
Really, can we ask?
Uh, just to clarify, this, Jim Ventress King brought the plan for the fields to the. Human Weapons Commission, at our last, actually, previous to that, I think it's coming up this month, would be the final time we have to act on. It's, information's come to me that the building committee for this facility has not completed all of the drainage. Which makes the process of bringing that plan before us, I think, pretty true.
So, so you're asking, did someone send him?
I, I made it very clear to Jim that he represents the Human Weapons Commission, not the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay.
And that in the future, they have to represent themselves, and he shouldn't be bringing those plans before us, because it's a conflict of interest.
I get it.
We are regulatory.
So who puts him on the agenda at these meetings and how does he get to them?
I.
It did put on the.
He puts it on the agenda. Jim would put it on the agenda.
But he's not the lead of the commission, he should be asking whoever the lead is to what the agenda item should be. So I guess I'm not understood, so someone just needs to talk to Jim.
So, I, I just wanna clarify, so this is not, has nothing to do with the fields, this has to do with the drainage that's coming from this complex.
That was the issue that kept them from being able to begin to develop the fields.
Would go under the fields, or whatever goes in the future, to a settling pond at some point. So it's not really has to do, doesn't really have. Yes, it impacts the playing fields, but no one's using them as playing fields, because there'd be a pipe underneath them to a settling pond beyond where the fields are.
They needed, before they could develop the field, the way I understood it.
Right, they need a way to get the water from behind the buildings there.
The drainage was gonna be set up, and until this building was complete and the drainage was in place, they couldn't be certain where anything would be. So now that things are pretty much settled in terms of where they're gonna be. I'm guessing that the idea is now we can go ahead and start looking at how, how we might use those fields.
But the fields themselves are not part of, the way I understood it, looking at the plans and everything, were not part of the. Would be impacted only in that the pipe would be underneath them.
Yeah, they, they're not gonna be directly used for the settling field or for anything like that. It was simply that they were gonna be impacted in some fashion in the building of this, and until they understood exactly what. Anyone, is that correct?
I don't know, I know it's unfinished business with the committees, as to how the drainage is gonna be handled.
Yeah, must be pretty close at this point.
I don't know.
Sorry, but I don't think this is the, I think the issue at hand is that. Things are getting on agendas that maybe shouldn't fall on agendas and that has to be addressed.
Yeah.
I think that's what we're getting to, right?
Yeah, and.
Um, so, right, so we can, I don't know who addresses that, I'm assuming that's.
I can talk to Jimmy about it, see what's going on, and say, cut it out.
Okay.
Okay, other, yes.
Yes, I also brought up the issue of, uh, if the town of East Town is gonna be paved in Petticoat Lane. What, uh, Huggerford Road next year, what arrangements the town are, if any, are you gonna take for the mile and a half, two miles. Straightaway running from, uh, Chattanooga Road to eighty-two?
I, you're.
It's a, it's a straightaway.
It's a racetrack.
Right now, they're doing sixty miles an hour, what are you gonna do when it's all nice and flat?
I, I live on eighty-two, and they do sixty miles an hour there, too.
Well, I.
And I, I'm sympathetic, I'm.
Right now, I'm off the radar, you never have cops on Huggerford Road, Petticoat Lane, eighty-two, yes.
But, you know, in, I talked to, uh, Beth, not for you, but in the past, I've talked to her about the, uh, humps, the, uh. The calming humps, or whatever they are, and she's very much opposed to those from a plowing standpoint. I don't know what we can do about that, maybe a stop sign in front of your house, and everybody stop. Yeah, that's.
Well, that goes along with changing the whole area where, uh, Huggerford and Mill, and, uh, Mill Breckout, that. Gets rushed under every three years, I bring it up.
Yeah.
You know, the town doesn't wanna pay for it, but it's three, we stopped there, but it doesn't stop that you're gonna have a, probably. But it doesn't stop that you're gonna have a probably a good straightaway.
I can understand.
A mile and a half, two miles.
I understand what you got there. And, you know, the cost of doing the conversion that you've mentioned is probably $50,000 now.
Correct. So we know that's not gonna happen.
So wait, what do we, so are you looking for a stop sign?
No. Well, I was years ago. I've come in front of the selectmen to change an intersection there, but that has gone nowhere. My main concern too is that from Shanigan Road to 82, it's about a mile and a half to two miles. And when you pave it, it's gonna be a raceway.
Is that Mount Penasses you're talking about?
No.
Petticoat Lane. Down to Huggerford.
Petticoat Lane.
Where's Shannon?
If you go all the way... Yeah, Shanigan Road, Petticoat Lane.
Oh, okay, because I was like, I thought it was a dead end, Shannon.
No, Shanigan Road, it's on the other side. It goes through the road.
Okay.
But then it's just a straightaway. There's one little curve and that's it.
What, you got two miles of straightaway there?
Pretty much.
It...
They're already racing at night there.
Literally.
Yeah.
Not figuratively.
Sure, so...
So what's the recommend, are you recommending something or you're just saying?
I was asking what the town might want to do about it.
Okay.
The dilemma is you got this incredible long, straight piece of nice new pavement and...
And have we as a town addressed that?
And how do we, how do we slow people down on it?
Okay.
You show a town.
So we're paving that road and so...
Petticoat is absolutely a disaster.
I understand that. So what have we...
It will be paved in summer.
Who makes those decisions to put something, to do something about? Is that us? Or is that on a committee somewhere? Because I'm not really sure.
I'm not sure what we do. Well, we have a piece of road that kids and people go too fast on. We can have the police down there more often. That's probably the only thing we can do. You know, the calming humps are something that people do use in places. Our public works prefers not to do that.
Well, they prefer not because, so does it damage the plow? Like, so what's the reasoning behind that?
I don't know because they're designed to be used with plows. Because they're not a pump, they're a hump.
So I guess we need more information as to why they prefer not to do it.
And the other thing is you get people going very fast and to go over one of those.
Well, then they slow down. They do it once and then they slow down.
Yeah, and in my town when I was growing up, when I was 18, a couple of teenagers did that. And both of them ended up in the wood quite dead.
Well, if they drive 80 miles an hour, we could have more than a couple, right? I mean, so there's many reasons, right, I guess. I'm just asking.
That's not something we can decide here.
Okay, so I'm asking you, who decides that? That's what I'm asking.
You gotta talk to Beth and you gotta talk to the police. That's the people who can handle it. Public Works, the people.
Okay, so...
And...
And you've already looked into it and you're, so you're inclined not to do anything? Is that what you're saying? I'm just trying to figure out where we are with it.
I can't come up with something. I'd love to do something. I can't come up with anything. I can't think of an answer. And if you've got one, I'd sure like to hear it.
Should we do a traffic study there, have a professional evaluate it?
Is it free?
I doubt it.
Come down and do the curb signs.
Right.
Do the roads, same price, same price.
Yeah.
Charlotte Gellston? Charlotte Gellston, we live basically at the top of Daniels Road, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with, was wide and then turned into a racing stretch because it was originally intended for, I guess, commercial property, which likely never happened. We had a huge problem with people speeding, racing at night. You hear them peeling out on the tires. It was a total racket. The town had to do some work on the bridge and in doing so, it did create some sort of a bump. And guess what? It helped incredibly to slow down the speeders. Now, on top of that, the road has been neglected to a great extent and we have a lovely array of potholes, which was an even better solution. I hope anyone speeding on that road now, even when you hit a pothole at speed, it's not good for your car. So perhaps the better solution is to leave the potholes and let's turn it back into a rural country town. Nobody speeds on Sims Lane. It's amazing. Nobody does because they don't want to ruin their car. Nobody speeds where there are potholes. So, you know, a sign doesn't do any good. We call and have the police up there because not only were people speeding, but they were zooming right up the hill through the stop sign. There was an accident with a school bus that was cut off by someone doing that. The school bus ended up stumbling and rolling partway down the hill, terrorizing all the kids. And did that help anybody having the police? No. So there are ways and the speed bumps that are designed, if I was to make it over them, are affected. But as I pointed out, even more affected is just leaving potholes.
We did that last year by not doing the road, postponing it. And I have been made, very clear to me that it absolutely has to happen now. The road is so bad.
Just wanted to briefly, about your possibility of new parks or whatever for fields. I'm thinking of right by Maple, if you go up the hill towards the top, it's down, I guess, built a, it appeared to be a soccer field. Never seen anyone on a soccer field. It's been, you cleared it. It's very nice. It's got grass on it. I don't know how often you cut it, but...
It's town land?
Yep. Well, it didn't get cleared like that by itself.
No, I meant, is it town land or is it someone else's property?
Theirs property, Mount Penasses.
No, no, he's talking, I know where you live, right up that road.
On Landing Hill Road.
Go up Maple and then it'd be the first left is at the top of the hill. There's a large flattened area. It appears to be a soccer field.
I don't think that's town land.
It could be. Okay. I was told by someone that it was a town field, just...
On Maple Street?
On Maple?
No.
No.
Or Maple Creek.
Again, pardon my ignorance.
Maple Creek, yeah, and I'm not good.
You go up Maple and, you know, I live across the street from the park where there's a big hill. It's not a park, it's a town, yeah, it's a...
You live on Landing Hill?
I do.
Okay, so you go past your house, then the first right is Maple.
Yes.
Okay, and somewhere up there?
Yeah, you go up to the first street.
Which is Creek Row.
Crosses with...
Creek Row, yeah.
There's a large field there. I mean, it's as big as a soccer field.
That's a state park.
It's, oh, that's state, oh, sorry.
It's a state park.
Okay.
Brainerd Homestead State Park.
Okay, so it could be used as a soccer field.
Probably not.
Oh, it just has to sit there.
It's just used for hay right now.
And the other thing is, I didn't mean to be too overbearing, but I do believe in continuous improvement and I believe in having a sense of urgency and everything. And all I say to you is that you're talking about a possible out because of this, this airstream problem that you're going to have, that it may cost you 150 or 200,000 dollars by simply enacting two things that they gave you on the roadmap. Though I would prefer to see you allocate some of those, should you do these things, towards improvements in the transfer station. But do you understand that they would literally pay for that?
Thank you. Todd?
I just want to follow what Bob just said, I was gonna say earlier as well. I know you folks are doing a lot of work, we all do. I have priorities every day in my job. And this is urgent because the people in town are expecting it. There's a big announcement, big report, talking about it. Now's the time to do your job, not a year from now, because they'll be like, they're like the curb signs, they'll just die away. As you know, Emmett, and I think Randy knows too, there's been two or three prior transfer study committees too. Came to nothing. And we need, we can't afford anybody's money to the point that Bob just made because we got other places to put that money. So what I suggest is you have a special meeting. Time he has a problem, have a special meeting and come up with a plan, with dates to it. Communicate that plan to the people in town so they know what's going on, where we're going. And you start, it may take several years to completely implement what Bob's committee has recommended. But I know you don't want that, we all don't want that, but please start with something because all we see now is you closed half the entrance to the transfer station. The hopper, there are two doors, no going one. That's the people we're seeing in town.
We also have a very active sticker program going right now. We already had stickers and they are being enforced and they are being issued right now. And that's become an issue. That was one of the items on it.
Well, are we gonna talk about that in the transfer station?
Let me just talk about it next.
Yeah, well, thank you.
If you have an active sticker program, I was talking about Saturday, I know you're gonna talk about it, but I won't be able to talk. This gentleman and his two kids got out of the car, East Hampton Baseball, his box is on the back, all three of them. So you tell me what's going on.
I can't address that particular one.
I could either.
So without being there, and had I been there, I might have.
I mean, I, we all saw them.
Yeah.
Advertising them, East Hampton.
There you go. Yeah. Anything else? Okay, unfinished business. We already talked about horizontal curve. And to some extent, we talked about the transfer station. We are working on that. Beth is working on it. I gotta tell you something. We got one road that goes in, goes up over the weigh station, down and in. We put everybody over that. That means everybody's gonna come back out over it. You'll have the most hellacious traffic jam you ever saw. I've asked her to work on how do we have a traffic flow? How do we reorganize it? It may mean do some paving. But that's part of what we have to do. None of this is gonna happen without planning. And I'll tell you what, we don't have excess staff that's just sitting around to do the planning. I've gotta do a lot of the planning. And right now, I'm putting in 60, 70 hours a week. And I haven't got any time left. And I'm doing as much as I can, as fast as I can. And we honest to God don't have excess labor just sitting around waiting to do stuff. I'm putting people on it, but none of them have excess time. It is going to take time to do all these things.
So can, are some of them not easy?
We are working on them and they are a matter of interest.
So I'm just asking, I'm just looking at the handout we got. So like tipping fee reduction from haulers. So what does it take to, I don't understand. Remember, I've never been.
Tipping fees?
So, I don't know what that means. Like, so is that, how do we, does that need a traffic chain? I don't know.
Those tipping fees are what it costs us to dispose of the material in Willamette.
Okay, so we can't get that done because then we have, we'll have an issue with, so our people have to then take it? Is that the word?
So... No, no, this is different from the hauling fees.
Okay, I'm just trying to say, I'm just trying...
We will charge people, so what's it take?
I'm trying to figure out what we can get done without having to go through traffic.
Your question is what's it take for us to implement that fee?
Right. Like, that's what I'm just asking.
That is exactly what I'm trying to do, is what can we do?
I know, but so just...
And how do we do it?
So just explain to me, because I'm very not, very unaware of what happens at the...
I'm feeling very defensive.
I know, I know, and I'm just asking.
I'm gonna tell you what we've done.
Oh, I think that might be the, tell us what has been done so far.
Yeah, we closed the back of it. There's hell to pay on that. A lot of people are very angry. We're doing it anyway. I'm taking the heat on it. I get a lot of phone calls.
So...
That's okay.
Okay, so let's, where does that fall in here as to what we were, so that's...
It was one of the recommendations and frankly, it's because people end up on the other side of it.
So there's a safety risk. That's the one with the safety risk.
There's a gate there. They back up to it with a pickup truck. They stand in a pickup truck and they throw the stuff in with a 25-foot fall in front of them.
Okay.
They slip and fall.
I'm just trying to figure out, so did it, was that any of the cost savings, was that anything?
That's a safety savings.
Okay, what else have we done?
I've gone up there and I've said, make the sticker program that we have right now work. We're gonna implement a new one, but we have a sticker program in place right now. They are issuing and checking. Do they catch everyone? No, and they're never going to. But they're very serious about making it work. I've said, start weighing people in and keep an eye on that. The system we have right now, use what you got, make it work better.
Okay, so just tell me where that, where that falls in this sheet of paper. Like, so... Is that something that...
I'm just trying to see what he has on this list because his...
Item number five.
The item from revenue from bulky waste to break even. That's making sure that people are paying for what they're taking up and back. And some of it is innocent. My daughter, witless with my truck. Oh, no, I just drive right up there. No, you go up there and you get weighed in. Here, I'll give you the money to pay for it. Oh, I never do that. Well, you do now. And she had no idea that she was supposed to.
So what you're saying is we implemented something for that?
And...
Which was?
I have gone up there and talked to the guys, said, get it under control. And they could to some extent, is it gonna be perfect? No. But to some extent, it's getting much better.
I think one of the problems, Sue, from my perspective and a lot of people's perspective is that scale is in the wrong location.
It's in a terrible location.
And that is causing, is gonna be one of the biggest issues there.
And again, my ignorance, there's no way to move it somewhere else.
Oh, yes, there's plenty of places to put it, but it was put in the wrong location where, when it was...
It would cost a fortune to move it.
Years ago.
This is a massive device.
So it costs money, okay, so you can't move it really.
What you do is you move the roads and you reorient your, how you get in there.
Okay, so...
Probably half the vehicles that are going up and back are moving metal or cardboard. That's free. You don't have to pay.
But they need to be checked and I think that's one of the issues.
And that's, and yet that's something that we sit and we hammer out with three guys. We put another staff person on. Now, we can realize maybe a savings of $50,000 and we can pay $50,000 to have another staff person there to do the checking. We're not overstaffed right now. We're in the midst of our contract discussions with the transfer station right now. And a lot of that is centering around how we're gonna use the people, what they're gonna do, what their jobs are gonna look like in the future. But we are in negotiation right now on that.
So that's why we can't address self-hauling, correct?
The which?
Self-hauling?
The self-hauling would not occur until we bought a truck.
I thought we had a...
We have it in the budget for next year.
Okay. Okay, that's all I'm asking. I'm just...
You know, and at that juncture is what we're planning on.
Can we hire a seasonal employee to assist in this transition period? Part-time or seasonal employees?
I think you'd have to hire someone full-time for it. I can't see where seasonal is gonna just...
Well, they must have some kind of...
In the long run, you're probably gonna need another person.
They must have some kind of...
I think in the interim, we could hire a seasonal to solve some of the immediate issues.
They must have traffic patterns as to, at the transfer station and...
I've asked Beth already and she supposedly is working on traffic patterns right now.
I mean, like for heavy traffic, right, days? So like for the summer to get some, someone to stand there and make sure everyone has. So at least like get it in people's heads that, listen, we're gonna check when you drive up this road to see if you have a sticker and we're gonna check to see if you're going, you know, if you're going in the back.
I've instructed the people who are there to do that, to check far more carefully and far more closely.
So one of the next steps, I think, for everyone's edification is to what we need to do to make this happen. So are you gonna have a town meeting? I believe technically, we don't have to have a town meeting. We can just enact this and move forward, but I think we wanna move...
Some of it, we can do that. But you know what? We have to have a plan before we have the meeting. And that's what we're working on now, is making a plan. How do we change the roads? What do we need in terms of personnel? Do we wanna go to an automatic gate? We can have stickers with a little widget on it and you pull up and the gate opens and lets you in. You don't have a sticker, you don't get in. That's an interesting approach. It doesn't cost much. Probably $6,000 to $8,000 to set that up.
But then you have to have a way for someone to get a sticker or explain...
Well, they get the stickers at the town clerk's office.
Right.
That's the game plan down the road.
We use our EZ Pass?
Then you have what?
Nothing.
Okay, the point is that none of this happens without planning. Okay, the point is that none of this happens without planning.
I, we understand that.
And people are stressed and stretched out pretty tight right now. And there's only a limited amount of time to do the planning. And we're doing it as quickly as we can. I'm taking it seriously, we're going to get it done. It isn't gonna happen in a week. And it isn't gonna happen just simply by sitting here and saying, oh, make that happen.
I don't think anyone's sitting here saying, make that happen.
Yeah.
We're asking, no, I don't.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have a plan. And you know what? As quick as we can, we're gonna have the plans. And then we'll make it happen.
Is there anything that needs to be done as far as the ordinance to clarify this and move this along? That portion of it?
The ordinance.
Or are we waiting to have the fines and that put in place?
It's complicated. Before we really, in a practical sense, can do anything, we have to have that, what we call the review board, or, it's got, you know, it's got better names for it, but let's leave it at the review board for the moment. That has to be in place.
Right.
And basically, from there, the animal ordinance, the trailer ordinance, and the transfer station ordinance in terms of littering and whatnot, that all hinges on getting that in place. Rich Roberts has got that. We're looking at Durham, we're looking at Middlefield right now in terms of what they're doing. And they're very similar to what we have. And then we have to have the underpinnings of it. All the paper, the ordinance, the citations have to be created. You have to have a way, who collects the money? Where does the money go once you've collected it? Those various things have to be in place. You have to have a complete organization. And looking at it, we can see how that's starting to shape up. And that's gonna fall together very quickly. Once you get the ordinance, we can use these other ordinance changes that we want, get those in place. Each one of those are gonna have fines, they're gonna have money generated, and they're all gonna reference back that review board that we have to have. That's required if you find anybody for anything. So, that's kind of the first step that we have to look at. I'm sitting, reading right now what Middlefield has and what Durham has, and it's very, very similar to what Randy created. It's based on the same state ordinance, state statute. So, it would, you'd expect them to be very similar. Okay. I think we've pretty much hammered those right now, all of them, right down the list. Any questions about, you know, down to E?
Have we heard from Mr. Roberts how soon he expects to have something to us?
He's come back and indicated that he wants to talk, that he's done a number of these that we need to talk about and just see exactly where we wanna go. As quick as I can have some time to do it, I'll be talking to him. Moving on to F, the strategic communications plan that we discussed last time. We've got one offer that's been proposed to us, that's to Sullivan and LaShane. There's another one coming that, the amount of money involved, you can't deal with just one. But beyond that, we really need to get a discussion with the Board of Ed, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, all get together and talk about this. What do we really wanna do? What are we looking to accomplish? We had a proposal back in the budget season of putting armed policemen in the schools. I'm personally not much in favor of that. I've got grandchildren in the school, so I'm concerned too. I don't know that having armed officers there all day, every day is the answer. But I do think we do need to have a better answer than we have right now. Some of it's communications, and I think we need a subcommittee from those three boards that sits down and really tries to define what the needs are, what are we trying to accomplish?
I have expressed an interest in.
Yes.
Taking charge of that committee, because I don't want this dragging on.
And I'd very much appreciate it if you could do that. That would be, I think, the right way to move forward with this one. You know, I've seen armed officers now twice, one in Texas where he was somewhat effective, one in Florida where he ran and hid in a corner. I'm not sure that's a good answer for what we're looking at. Anyway, any thoughts on that?
So, I mean, I guess what I'd like to do is put together, like, a charge for that committee, like, an ad hoc, and I'll give it to the next.
You give that a shot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. New business. Find out. Okay. We got a letter here. Mr. Robert Lyman and First Selectman Town of East Haddam. Dear Mr. Lyman, March 29th, 2018, the Town of East Haddam published a request for a proposal for LEP remedial investigative services and a hazardous building material survey for the former town office complex located at number one and number seven Main Street. The proposal opened, opening occurred on April 24th, 2018, and eight contractors submitted bids for the project. The lowest combined bid totaled seventeen thousand eight hundred seventy-five. The highest combined bid totaled forty-eight thousand ninety-seven five cents. A selection committee comprised of you, this writer, land use administrator, James Ventress, and East Haddam resident and licensed LEP, Tim Majak, met to discuss the proposals. The group met with lowest bidder, Eagle Environmental, and all were satisfied with the proposal, proposed HBM surveys, the River House and the former town hall. The committee negotiated additional testing, however, for the former town garage site and requested a revised scope from Eagle. On June 4th, 2018, the town received a modified proposal from Eagle, including the additional work with a new total of twenty-two thousand four hundred sixty-five. This amount maintains Eagle Environmental as the low bidder in the project, and there are no local companies within a ten percent margin. Town of East Haddam has worked successfully with Eagle on other projects, and they complete the annual underground tank inspections for the Board of Education. Most recently, they completed a hazardous building materials survey during the company one firehouse renovation, and they successfully mitigated a suspected hazard during the construction phase of the same project. I am confident to recommend that the Board of Selectmen approve the proposals submitted by Eagle Environmental for the investigative services for the former town hall complex. Respectfully, Ron Turner, Director of Operations. And attached to that, you'll find the bid sheet. And you can see that they range from, at this point, twenty-two thousand four sixty-five, all the way to forty-eight thousand ninety dollars and seventy-five cents. And I can comment, looking at it, to some extent, that has a lot to do with scope. It's not that anyone is overcharging, but the question really becomes one of, what is it we need done? What are we looking for? What level of service do we need? And on reading some of the proposals, you're looking at going, that really is a lot more than we want or need. Yes, maybe, maybe it'd be good to have it, but we really don't need a lot of that, a lot of what was being offered by the time you get to forty-eight thousand dollars. And Eagle has done a good job in the past, and I'm in agreement with Ron's conclusion that this is the best, the best deal for the town. So, any thoughts on that? Any discussion, Sue?
Glad it's done.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Environmental Services Selection Committee and award the contract for LEP and HBM environmental services at the former town office site to Eagle Environmental, Inc., in the amount of twenty-two thousand four hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. There we go.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Beer and wine approvals. We have two, one for the Grange Hall and one for the Rathburn Library. Read the first. Like, an approval for the film event, the Grange Film Series to offer on a BYOB, two adults attending the film showing on the June 19th at the Grange. We held the same event last summer, and we're appreciative of your support. We would also like the advanced approval for the next events in this film series through December 2018. We usually offer these events every two to three months. We would anticipate there'd be an additional three to four events in 2018. This is from Lisa Conroy at Park and Rec. And I will make a motion to approve the BYOB Beer and Wine Event at the Grange Hall for the Grange Film Series for June 19th, 2018, and the balance of the series events for the 2018 calendar year. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
We have the right insurance to be able to do all that, right?
I'm sorry?
The insurance?
Oh, yeah, the insurance.
For having beer and wine?
With our approval, there's not an issue with that.
Okay.
Herman's made that clear, so we're okay.
So, one thing, if you say BYOB Beer and Wine, it should be BYO Beer and Wine, so someone else doesn't bring some other beverage, as in a hard beverage.
Are we only allowed to have beer and wine?
Correct.
That is forbidden on town property.
I understand that, but does it make it clear, maybe?
BYO Beer. To approve BYO Beer and Wine Events. There it is. That's all of it.
Well, BYOB is booze usually, right? So, it should be, bring your own beer and wine.
Right.
The motion actually says BYOB Beer and Wine.
Okay.
So, it's, it's clear about it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, from Michael Gilroy at the library. The library is hosting an adult program on June 15th from seven to eight-thirty. Friends would like to serve wine. The event is after library hours, is attended for adults. Can we get this request on the June 6th, Board of Selectmen agenda? And the event is Harriet Beecher Stowe, How Her Words Changed the World. And on that note, I'll make a motion to approve, it says Beer and Wine Service at the Rathburn Library, Rathburn Library, rather, for the Harriet Beecher Stowe Program on June 15th, 2018. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Board, the commission changes. We have a letter, East Haddam Commission on Aging, East Haddam Senior Center, Mudus, Connecticut. Dear members, I regret to inform you that I will be resigning from the COA. This will be my last meeting. I've enjoyed working and being part of the committee for many years. I will miss it and also all of you. Sincerely, Rosalie Hoffman. And with that said, I'm gonna make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Rosalie Hoffman from the Commission on Aging. Get a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And following that, I am going to make a motion to reappoint John Pagnani as a regular member for the three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2020, on the Commission on Aging. And that is based on the minutes from the May 24th meeting, at which he was, now my committee recommended that John Paganey, Paganey, rather, be reappointed for another term. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, tax refunds. And I'm gonna make a motion to award tax refunds, the amounts as presented. Ninety-eight dollars and thirty cents to Toyota Lease Trust, two hundred and three dollars and forty-two cents to Toyota Lease Trust, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-five cents to Toyota Lease Trust, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-seven cents to Toyota Lease Trust. Can I get a second on that?
Okay.
And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Once again, public comment. Todd?
I have a suggestion. I heard the call, we talked about the transfer station, letting the recommendations of the committee, and I heard that sufficient manpower had been done in a time of desperate manner. I suggest we have a committee, like, a good example analogy. Before we built the high school, there was a school study committee that came up with a plan, what school we build, the size and type and so forth. And then there was another committee formed to build it, designed to build it. Perhaps this is what we should do with the transfer station. The committee has come up with a plan, a skeleton plan, and obviously, we ran into problems with locations and scale locations. Now, we need a committee to retool the transfer station. And I think the call should go out, a charge should be made, call up the volunteers, and go get it done.
That's an interesting thought. I'll be checking it, would think about, or try to figure out whether or not we can do that.
I think you can.
Seems like we should be able to, but I certainly would need to involve Beth with that, that's her promise.
Right, but she should be on the committee, just like she was on the.
Yeah, I mean, she'd wanna be part of that.
Right.
And I.
Good idea.
Am not opposed to that idea, and I think that would take a considerable burden off of people. Okay, I like that. Any, yes, sir?
I'll follow on to that. Two of the, if you recall, two of the committee members offered to do just that. I don't remember who they were, James was one to help out there. Fellow of the Runse, Mike, Mike Burner, runs the Essex Transfer Station. He actually offered, he brought that up, saying he'd like to be involved in doing that.
Okay.
I wanna address something that came up here with regard to what you need time to do. There are certain things on here. If you're separating all these different items on this, if you ask questions about what are tipping, tipping fee reductions from haulers? What that is, is there's a cost to get rid of all the municipal solid waste. That's from hopper, as well as from the, it's the bulky waste. That has to go currently, it goes to Willametteque waste. They come, they pick it up, we pay about ten dollars a ton to bring it there. That's transportation cost. That's addressed by buying the, the truck, that employed truck. The tipping fee on the other hand is the hand, is the money that's actually paid to them, for them to take it. We have two that are close by, one is in Essex, which you'd probably take to the garbage too, because it's so much closer than Willametteque. You may have some contract issues, I don't know. It's anticipated that these costs are going to be going up considerably, since the state of Connecticut are closing some of the incinerators that are used to get rid of it. I spoke to someone at the EEP, and they said, it may approach a hundred dollars. It's addressed in the report that I wrote to you, of saying that these costs are going to go up very quickly. If you separate, and I sort of made a commitment to James that we wouldn't do this, but that was, you know, that was then. He wanted to see the bag plant being impacted start at the same time, because he believes that more people will move towards private carters, and that was his business logic of that business and doing that. That's separate from, that's separate from all waste. That's separate from, that's separate from all waste Hartford, which is the commercial carting. It's not always controlled, that's a local cart. Without doing anything else, if you separate this, you can save $86,000 by writing a letter. You don't need a plan, you need to give them fair notice. I think in Mansfield Durham, the one that just eliminated it, they gave their people six months. You could sit here tonight and you could write a letter saying, as of December 31st, so-and-so, you will no longer be there, and you will start accruing money that day. That's up for you to decide whether you want to implement that.
I'm sorry, what does this letter say? I misunderstand you.
You can.
You have to have a plan in place.
It bans the, the commercial haulers from bringing their.
Oh.
Household waste.
Okay.
Effective such and such date.
Effective Sunday, and you don't need a plan for that.
That's a go-to-town meeting?
It has to go to town meeting.
No.
Haulers are listed on the ordinance, if the ordinance change, you have to go to town meeting.
Changing ordinance.
That's the issue there.
But, so, but, so, that said.
Mm-hmm.
To get that done, all we have to do is go to town meetings. But I guess that could be an issue. Okay, I know what, I know where this is leading now.
Now you understand?
Now I'm getting it, okay. It's leading, because then they'll, I'll pack the.
Well, if you're going to change the ordinance, you need to have everything in place when you write the new ordinance, which means you have to have the, all the stuff having to deal with, how do you, the citations, the review board, et cetera. All that has to be in place, or as part of the new.
They're not going to go for not bringing their trash.
Oh, right.
If you don't have a sticker in place, because that's the whole point of that.
Or a bag system or whatever.
Right, or a bag system.
So, it's all tied in. I get it. Thank you.
I guess, I'm trying to say I'm right now very confused. Are our hands being tied by ordinance, don't you tell me?
Our hands are always tied by ordinances.
Okay, well, what's the ordinance? I can't even know what the ordinance says.
The ordinance is online.
I haven't. Sorry. So, the ordinance is going to change to have something in it that talks about fines, and we haven't gotten any, first, we have to get that ordinance in place to change all the other ordinances, so that we have the ability, right? Because, am I saying this correctly?
For fine.
So.
To appeal the fine.
To appeal the fines and stuff, so, so that's the piece that's holding up all of our.
Not only that, stickers, stacks, you have the choice to do on your own. It says you have a, in the ordinance, the Board of Selectmen have the means to decide how they want to collect money, set fees, do any of that kind of stuff. So, that can be done up and the voice of the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
What can't be done, and what has to be done by the voice of the town meeting, because in your ordinance, you allow commercial haulers to haul here, you've got to remove that portion from the ordinance. In order to remove something from the ordinance, you have to go to town meeting.
So, you would think that's an easy answer.
The ordinance permits the haulers to go.
If it's an in-ordinance, ordinances have to be voted at town meeting.
Exactly.
Not policy, okay? Policy can be implemented, as you just said. You could go, and I guess you're making some measures. I think your idea having to do with a regional, a town, a part-time employee, to start the thing on, on monitoring what goes on at bulky waste is a good one, because it won't cost you much money. You can have the kid stand up there, if he sees something going on there, doesn't have a sticker, and he hasn't gone through, hasn't gone through the, the scale, then notify someone.
So, so there's a union, there's a union contract that prohibits.
Well, I'll be very frank with you. We, when we visited, when we visited two places, granted Essex is a smaller place, but Portland you should go to, because it's not small, okay? And they have two people, and they, and they have two people there, and they do their own carting. And we have three people, okay? We recommended no staff changes, okay? Because I think that's dangerous.
So, I think, I think, I think the idea of getting a committee together to really get this going, to move this process along, because you, I don't know if you were here the last meeting. I mean, we've had all these same, so we had these conversations of how do we get this moving, rolling along. So, the idea of getting a committee, ad hoc committee, to get it together, to get a plan in place in a more timely fashion is the way to go. I don't, we can sit here and debate this all night, but, and I appreciate you coming and.
I won't help that, so why?
Hi. But, thank you.
I took, I took, when you interviewed me, I think I said to you, I'll probably be a, I'd probably be a pretty good chairman, but I don't know whether I really want to do it. The reason was, was because I knew what you had done in the past. And a gentleman like him sat there on two things, and then he did nothing. You wasted a whole bunch of time. And it was my hope that I could write a report to you that would be different than what you'd seen before, that was totally focused on, on the interests of the taxpayer. And that's what everything here was, just how do I reduce the cost without reducing services? And that's what it's all about. And I just hope that, it sounds like you're making an effort to go and do that, I hope that you're successful in doing it. But I, I pray to God that you don't do what's happened in the past, because it would really, it's just, it would just be a waste of everyone's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other?
I kind of have a question. I hear Mr. Brownell talk about Jim Ventress working for him. Jim Ventress works for the town of East Haddam, doesn't he, now?
Mm-hmm.
And in light of the way we're organized in town with different commissions and such, you report to the commission, but you work with them. You know, our town employees work hard all over town, and they deserve to be recognized as employees with those rights, and not necessarily under the thumb of a commission. I just want that set. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Randy?
Just a suggestion, is that I might want to read the transfer station ordinance, better understanding of what it says. Hold on in there, if you have authority to, for a little discussion. Yes?
The ordinance you're speaking.
The current ordinance.
I, I've read it a number of times. And, yes. Anything else? Okay. Selectmen's Discussion. The only, that I wanted to go into is that we're going to have a public hearing, the Selectmen's Office will hold a public hearing to review community projects desiring to qualify the donor tax credits from the Neighborhood Assistance Act Program, 2018. Projects must be submitted to town ag, by town agencies or by nonprofit organizations, must be submitted on forms available from the First Selectmen's Office. For more information, call 860-873-5021. And we are going to have the public hearing, June 15th, at 7:00 PM, in Municipal Office Complex Room Number Three. That's over where the, the food is ordinarily served and the refrigerator is. We do have three applicants. The Town of East Haddam will do a open space application. Goodspeed Opera House will have an application, and the Palmer Warner House, which is Connecticut Landmarks, will have an application. And this is simply a notice at this point that we will have those public hearings. And the act is a little bit interesting. Basically, what this does is to authorize the various organizations that have applications in to accept donations, to go out and apply for, request donations from various corporate or individual people, and that in turn, those donations may be used as a tax deduction. So, the actual application is to make the donors eligible for their tax reductions. In any case, that will be June 13th, Meeting Room Number Three in this building. Anything else?
Emmett, I'm confused, because these are five, either town or 501(c)(3)'s, and any donation to them would be a tax. It would be a tax.
I don't fully understand it myself.
Exactly. I mean, it would be a tax deduction, so, I mean.
I think this may make it possible for people who might be, not be eligible for the tax deduction to gain one.
So, why is it submitted to the town, though? It has to be submitted to the town, correct?
State program that requires that. The state, it's governed by state statute, and it's a state program that.
But what, okay, I'll rephrase it. What is the town's responsibility?
We have to pull in, basically pull in the application, we have to have a public hearing, the public hearing has to, if there's a project that a nonprofit or something wants to do, that the town would be totally against, that's why you have the public hearing. And then they want the Board of Selectmen to bless any projects that go up to the state for this type of funding. That's why they want it to go to the Board of Selectmen.
Because I'm just looking.
They don't have to do it, not every town does it. We've just done it for.
Well, I'm just looking at the Connecticut Landmarks one, and I'm just.
First time they ever submitted.
Ah, so, I mean, $500,000 for a timber frame contract? I mean, I'm just looking at some of the stuff here, and I'm thinking, more work needs to be done. And also, I mean, the, the application from the Goodspeed was very clear, I mean, very, much more extensive, you know, there's 990 and other forms here, 84, 53, and none of that came from, I didn't see one of those from.
The, the first page of their back register?
Yeah.
I just saw it this afternoon.
Oh, for Connecticut Landmarks?
It's sitting on my desk right now, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's all right.
So, I'm just.
I requested that from them when they submitted their, so it wasn't.
Okay. And Emmett, the $20,000, where did that come from?
The which?
The $20,000 that we're requesting?
Who don't?
The town has traditionally done $20,000 every year for the last 20 years. Sometimes we get something, sometimes we don't. It takes me five minutes to put the application together, and some years I get $1,000, and it goes into the open space trust fund for helps with surveys, help with.
Oh, no, I, 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 I just wondered where the amount came from, I mean, because it's the first time I've seen it, so.
We always put in $20,000, they've done $20,000 forever, we never get $20,000. If you wanted to get $20,000, it'd be a full-time job for me to solicit businesses to try to get 500 here, 1,000 there, and, and we just put it out there, and sometimes we're lucky and get some money. Like Connecticut here one year looked at what all the towns and all the organizations that they insure, applied for, and had a bucket, bucket of money that they decided that they were going to share to all their customers, so everybody got a share through the Neighborhood Assistance Act. Our share was like $1,029 for five minutes of work.
Why not? Well, no, I'm not, I'm just saying, I, I'm not familiar with the program, so I'm not, I was wondering where the amounts came from.
Do we have to approve anything?
Why they were generated, and how they were generated, or, you know. So, thank you.
At least now it's going to be indoors. It used to be out in front of the old town hall. You go down at 7:00 and stand there for, what, 20 minutes, an hour? Daddy would come by, that'd be about the sum total of it. Okay. Anything else?
So, just to wrap up, a couple of items, the road, so, so we're not doing any follow-up on the road, the road issue.
Which road issue?
Road.
Petty code?
Yes. Are we, are we doing, are you doing, I can't remember.
That, that contract has been let, and they're doing it this summer.
So, there's no.
This is not something that's up for grabs, it's a done deal.
So, they're, that's already been let?
Yeah.
They've already, we've got bids back and everything for that, or are we using state contracts or whatever for that?
I, is, this, for the petty code, that's, that's next year's budget.
That's next year's budget.
Next year's budget, they can't do that until after July 1st, I don't.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm just asking for follow-up, I didn't know.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking of something else.
Like off a state bid, I don't know, if she usually uses what Pastria, or one of those, if he's on the state bid, she can use him. If not, she'd have to go out to bid unless they do it themselves.
Yeah.
I don't know how she's going to do it, but I think she's coming to the next meeting, yes.
Well, that's all I can say, why don't we question that, or have, if we have questions at the next meeting?
Okay. And at the last meeting, maybe we got a letter about doing, discussion about charter study. Are we doing any, anything with that?
I haven't even looked at the charter study angle. You know, it's not, not a bad idea. I liked it when I saw what they were 15 years ago, and the fact that 115 towns out of 169 have done it, seems worthwhile. It does take about a year of work by a committee to, to really put a charter together, and it has to be crafted correctly, has to be crafted very carefully.
So, we're not looking at it, I'm just asking.
We're not actively looking at it at this point. We'd have to put a committee together and have them delve into it, and as I say, it's been about a year.
But the good news is, there's lots of charters to look at, so we're not reinventing the wheel.
I mean, you can have a charter like Salem, where it's essentially everything just the way it was.
Thank you.
With the exception that the first selectman gets elected every two years, and I think there's three other selectmen, and they get elected every four years. Then you can go down to, and I forget if it's Guilford or Branford, one of them down there, the charter has three people elected, three selectmen elected every year. And those three people appoint, hire, everything throughout the town. And obviously, one party or the other has dominance in that, and that has to be a very interesting situation. Charters permit you to do just about anything. What they do do is offer you to take charge of your town, you're running your own town. Right now, any of our boards and commissions, if there's an issue with them, Secretary of State's in charge, not the town. And the other thing is that a state statute that's passed up there can't compel us to change any of our ordinances or laws. Right now, if some statute is passed in Hartford that's contrary to what we have on our books right now in town, we have to change what we have. So, we have to stay tuned to this, what the state wants. Those are the two big benefits that I can see, that we run our own town and we don't have to change things.
My other note, I know Randy mentioned the transfer station ordinance, did we get that with, because I don't see it, I might, I have my ordinances.
I've probably given it to you.
You have multiple times, really?
Yeah.
I know we have the.
And, and you know what, I have you the current copy for right now.
And I know it's online, too. I was just wondering if we have. Oh, I think I have that in here.
Yeah.
Sorry. It says solid waste, I just.
Yes, solid waste.
The same thing.
There it is.
Sorry.
Okay.
Couple things. When all these trees are being cut on our town property and being trucked away, where do they go, all the firewood?
Right now, they're largely taking it back to the Public Works, and it's supposedly piled in a big pile behind it. Steve Heather's approached me, said, you know, for relatively little money, we can put in a wood burning stove, one of the remote units, and generate a good chunk of the heat that we use within Public Works. And we're looking into that right now. Says we got all this wood sitting here, enough that it'll last us almost forever, we keep getting more, why on earth aren't we burning it?
That does make sense, but I mean, with the amount of wood that is potentially going to be generated, there's.
Oh, it's going to be fantastic.
So, we have a wood stove at the Public Works building?
Not yet. But, and these, these are the remote ones, this isn't in the building, this is outside of the building. And he said that it's a system that he's seen work and worked very effectively, and we certainly have the, the resource to do it.
I just think that we'll have more than enough wood, and it'll rot, and what comes down will rot before it ever gets there, unless we put some sort of policy in place to either sell it or whatever, because I think.
You know, the ash has the issue that it has the grubs in it, and supposedly, they've all hatched and flown anyway, but it feels a little bit disquieting to be using that, moving it around.
Well, the, the wood could obviously be sorted, I mean, they can recognize the ash and everything.
Oh, because it's superb firewood.
So, I mean, just, I think we need to have some sort of, because there's going to be thousands of yards, or cords of firewood that are going to end up there, so. be thousands of yards, or cords of firewood that are going to end up there, so, we're going to have to have some sort of policy in place how to dispose of it. I don't think the furnace, no matter how, if it's an official one, there's no way it could ever burn everything that would be brought in.
That's something to think about. And what do we do with it? I, I watched the wood, I was down there the other day, they had two, literally that big, the length of the bed of the truck, maple logs. And I, maple's a little tough to cut up, but I've done it often enough, and I've cut stuff that big. I looked at it, said, "Why don't you just drop that in my yard? I got a whole winters' wood right there."
Well, that's one thing, obviously, I mean, I know you're being facetious, but the, those are the types of issues that raise their head, so...
Absolutely. And I, and I said, frankly, I don't have the time to cut it up, so that's nothing I could even begin to think about. A boy was looking at it, saying, "That's a lot of wood, and I know how much heat there is in that."
So, just as a quick aside, why were, I know one of those trees is bad, but were the other two trees bad there?
The sub-amborgon?
Yeah.
I don't know, and I've heard various stories about it, whether or not they needed to come down, or why they came down.
Well, I mean, that's a question that I would...
I don't know.
Those types of things need to be carefully evaluated, because there's two other trees that are, you know, right, not on my property, but on a neighbor's property that need to come down, they're maples that are very rotten, and they should be down, and...
I don't make those decisions.
But someone is making them, and they need to, someone, there needs to be clarity as to how these decisions are made, because...
And I, perhaps like you, am a bit of a tree hugger. I don't really like to see trees come down.
Okay.
So while we're on the subject...
Hi.
I'm kidding. And I know I said this to you on the phone, we talked at one point, and it looked like they widened BB road even more after they, after they, and I know you, you say they didn't.
From what Jimmy measured, I've got the map, you know, here it's wider, there it's narrower, I do know they added drainage to it.
So that's not part of it, that's why, because they added these big, long drains, or what? They did something over the last week that the road looks even bigger than ever.
Yeah, and that, maybe that drainage, and that drainage is fundamental to keeping the road from eroding too quickly. It's going, it's a dirt road, it's going to erode over time. But, you know, do we have to go back there and rebuild it every, every second year, or can we do it every fifth year? And that's kind of what we're looking at now, trying to make it a little bit better. I talked to Steve about that road, what they were doing, and what the process was that he was using on it. And they brought in a special roller, much heavier than normal, to really compact everything and just get it solid. And they crowned it, and as I understand it, there's a, they scraped it, and they put a layer of different sort of gravel in there, and then put it back on it, and I know you told me that it's real bumpy now.
Yeah, it seems bumpier than ever. I mean, it's not big ruts, it's not big ruts, now it's small little bumps.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Which is fine.
I haven't had a chance to drive it, I want to get down there, because I want to see those signs as well, the speed signs, and see what those are all about.
I just wanted to comment about it.
Last thing, Emmett, are you familiar with the Roadmaster Program?
The which?
Roadmaster Program.
The name rings a bell, but not really.
So it's a series of workshops that's put on by the Connecticut Technology Transfer Center, which is actually part of UConn, I believe. And it's designed to provide Connecticut's municipal highway personnel with knowledge of the fundamentals of modern road maintenance, management procedures and techniques. And I just think it'd be a good thing to have many towns send their staff through the program, and I just think it would be a good thing for our people to be looking at.
Something we need to make Beth aware of.
Is it free? Oh, we do, we already do.
Everybody's done it? Beth has been through it.
I don't know if she's been through the whole thing, but it's a series of...
Yeah, there's a number of workshops, there's a number of workshops.
It's not all just one complex, it's a series of workshops, and she goes to training workshops. I believe Steve was, and then the people for him had gone, so every time there's a transition, they start sending the new people.
Okay.
And we are using it. Maybe that's why I've heard the word, or heard the name.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All that said, I think we're at the, the end of it. And I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:56.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.